Good morning. It's the Operations Committee from October 18th. Can we get a roll call, please?
Yes, and is your mic on? I just want to double check.
It's on.
Okay, thank you. Director Matt Sampson.
Here.
Director Monte Schmidt.
Here.
Director Jed Smith.
Here.
Vice Chair Ranjiv Kush.
Here.
And Chair Larry Russell.
Here.
Thank you.
Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments on the agenda?
There are none.
Roll call, please.
Director Sampson.
Yes.
Director Schmidt.
Yes.
Director Smith. Director Smith.
Aye.
Vice Chair Kush.
Aye.
And Chair Russell.
Aye.
Thank you.
Public comments on non-agenda matters?
There are none.
Okay, thank you. Need a motion to approve the minutes from the Operations Committee on September 20, 2024?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Director Sampson.
Yes.
Director Schmidt.
Yes.
Director Smith.
Aye.
Vice Chair Kush.
Aye.
Chair Russell.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, item B, Nacasio spillway modification project environmental review and permitting services. Hi, Alex.
Good morning, directors. Alex and I, Engineering Director. This morning, I have Alicia Irish here, our Planning Manager, who's going to be providing, you know, presenting this item today on the environmental documentation of permitting support in support of the Nacasio modifications project. So, Alicia?
Great, good morning.
Good morning, Alicia.
So the district, as you know, is in the early stages of the Nacasio spillway modification project, which is one of the near-term projects that came out of the local storage enlargement assessment. This is all in an effort to improve the resilience of Marin Waters' water supply system. The environmental review and permitting process is going to be a critical component to getting this project completed. The contract that we're proposing includes the project's environmental review process, including CEQA and NEPA, required permitting, endangered Species Act compliance, as well as a robust stakeholder and agency engagement process. So the request for proposals for this contract was put out on October 4th. Proposals are due today. There was five firms that this was distributed to, and we are anticipating three proposals back. It's, you know, we're requesting that the Operations Committee review and refer to a regularly scheduled board meeting for contract award, the Nacasio spillway modification project environmental review and project permitting services contract.
What's the estimated amount?
I'm estimating about a million bucks for this project or for this contract. I mean, it's, it's a lot that we're asking. And we don't quite know the level of environmental review that we'll be moving forward with, so.
So it was sent to like ESA or to Black and Beach?
It was sent to ESA. It was sent to ICF, Horizon Water and Environment, Panorama, and then Black and Beach as well.
EIR firms, basically. Okay, any questions?
Alicia, I noticed that it was, there were possibilities for both CEQA and NEPA.
That's correct.
And that, I guess, will depend on the funding sources, at least whether or not we go forward with NEPA, is that right?
Correct, yeah. NEPA is listed in the RFP at least as an optional task, should we need it. But you're correct, the funding will determine whether NEPA is needed.
So hopefully, we need it.
Great. What happened with the Division of Dam Safety? There was some question about whether they would go for it at all?
The project? Yeah, so we actually met with them earlier this week to bring about the Nacasio project, but also sort of introduce them to what we're thinking about in terms of our water supply. It was a very positive meeting. DSOD was quite receptive and interested to the projects that we're moving forward with. We are planning out our engagement process with them and are planning to meet with them about every couple of months at this point. We, we of course need DSOD approval for our final design before any kind of construction takes place. I mean, that's one of many approvals that we'll need, you know, as we're listing here. But we'll be meeting with them as we develop the design criteria, the 30% design kind of all along the way. So there's no surprises, you know, when we're looking for that 100% approval. So I would say it went quite well.
Yeah, I would agree. I think Alex and I were both there, along with Mark Kazrae. It was a very collaborative meeting and, you know, lots of encouragement to call them and, and communicate before even official type submittals. So to clarify certain key criteria that you might be using. DSOD doesn't have a sort of set of specifications that you can design to. It's all a little bit gray. And it's just the nature of dealing with dams. It's, it becomes a risk question. And as you know, those are, are sort of shades of gray. The lines are not very definite. So it's going to be an interesting process for us as we go forward, but yeah, it was, it was a great meeting.
What does their approval look like?
You know, as Alicia was referring to, there, there will be a series of submittals, usually 30% through 100% even, and they'll be tracking their comments along the way.
And then they come back with a letter saying it's okay or not okay?
Yeah.
Their ultimate approval is dependent upon, like, are CEQA being approved? And, you know, so there's, there's a lot of things that need to culminate to kind of all come together, yeah.
With, coming up.
I'm sorry, I, I just wanted to make clear that, you know, we should focus on the specific item that is agendized. I think some questions that are contextual or appropriate, but just so we don't get into a full discussion, and I'm sure that there will be more information brought back to the board to talk about, you know, the DSOD part of this. This is a focus on the environmental and permitting work, so.
Coming off the heels of the watershed committee meeting yesterday morning with approval for a study for some work on Nacasio Creek, is there any connection or synergy between this work and that?
That study is really to fill in some of the data gaps on the information that we don't have and kind of get us a little bit more prepared for, you know, the permitting process, because the permitting process, we're anticipating some of those questions will be asked. And as of right now, we have very limited information on that.
Got you. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any questions from the public? Any comments?
There are none.
Okay, can I get a motion towards the board?
So moved. Second.
Okay. Cool. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, you're gonna do C2?
Still here.
Okay, great.
So, yeah, Alicia will also be presenting the amendment for the continued support of grant application assistance as we move forward with some of these more complicated projects.
Good morning again. So we're always looking for ways to leverage available grant funding for critical infrastructure projects. We currently have $33 million in grant applications under review right now. And depending on the grant, the applications can be fairly complex, technical, and more importantly, have a very short turnaround time between when the solicitation comes out and when the application is due, which can greatly impact, you know, existing workloads for staff. So in October of 2023, the district entered into a professional services agreement with Black and Beach for grant application development support. This was primarily for the FEMA BRIC grant, the Building Resilient Infrastructure and Communities Grant, for the San Jacinto Treatment Plant Clarifier Reconstruction Project. This original agreement was only supposed to last two months to get us through that initial application. And then we moved from CalOES and we got recommended to FEMA, which is something that hasn't happened before, so it was quite exciting for the district. And so there was a no-cost amendment number one to extend the original agreement out to support with the various requests for information from FEMA and get us through that process. There was an amendment number two executed in that same timeframe in the spring of 2024 to expand the not-to-exceed amount as well as the agreement as we were still in the FEMA review process. We ultimately did not get selected by FEMA for our project. However, we were recommended by CalOES to pivot our project to the Hazard Mitigation Grant. So we've done that. We applied for the Hazard Mitigation Grant. It's a $22 million grant for a full replacement of the two clarifiers at San Jacinto. We haven't heard from CalOES whether we've advanced to FEMA. At this stage, we're anticipating a notification in early 2025, similar to the BRIC grant schedule. However, we found the Black and Beach team to be very responsive and knowledgeable and able to meet these short deadlines. There was a recent solicitation that came out from DWR for the dam safety and climate local resilience. That solicitation was put out in late September and applications are due on Monday. And we are planning to submit two applications for this grant related to, you know, dam safety projects that we have. So we're requesting at this time to extend the completion date of our existing grant support contract and increase the not-to-exceed total amount to $300,000. Staff's requesting the Operations Committee review and refer this item to a future regular board meeting.
Thank you. Questions?
With this, what, what does the funding include besides just the application piece?
Well, it includes, you know, allowing, you know, the application. And then as you move forward, typically, there's requests for information that come out. So there's follow-up once you get the initial application submitted.
So with this $300,000 amount, do we anticipate it would take us all the way through award and management of, or we have to come back with, with more money should the grant be successful?
So it depends, one, on how many solicitations come out. You know, we originally put forth this agreement for this one FEMA BRIC grant, and then we didn't get that award, but we moved to other applications. And then we're finding, you know, this DWR grant wasn't really on our radar, and it came out, and we were just trying to take advantage of.
No, no, I support the process. I'm trying to figure out, when you're asking for not to exceed a $300,000, what does that get us? Does it get us management all the way through awards? Should we be awarded of it? Or would this just be to get our application in, respond back to some requests for additional information, and then we would see it over the finish line? And where I'm going with this is, at some point, these numbers are going to, we should look at and say, do we need a staff member instead of paying a consultant? Could we bring someone internally to be able to handle all this if the number keeps going up?
Yeah, it's a, it's a good question, and I think we'll keep an eye on it. One of the things to remember about these grants is they all have different criteria. Just an ever so slightly, you need to be able to take the technical information that we're working with and massage it in a way so that it best performs in that particular grant. And as Alicia was talking about, a lot of these projects have technical components. Black and Beach, it kind of, I wouldn't say uniquely positioned, but they're well-positioned to handle technical issues regarding, you know, all of our traditional infrastructures. So we expect, I think, a number of different grant applications to come up across the next year or two years over this period of time that this $300,000 would support.
And that's helpful, and also appreciative that we're able to pivot so quickly for a different funding source. Thank you. Maybe just, Alicia, the original agreement was made in October 2023, and that, what was the amount for that? I know it was.
That original amount was for, I want to say, $40,000, $36,000, something like that. It covered the original application, and then a FEMA grant requires a benefit cost analysis, which not all grants do, so it covered both of those aspects.
Okay, and then we had the no-cost extension in February of this year, and then the amendment in March to increase it to $95,000. Now, the current amendment that's proposed to increase the total to $300,000, that's, that's on a as-needed basis, right?
Absolutely.
So we may not be spending that amount. It's really dependent on the number of opportunities that emerge.
What it does is it gives us the flexibility to pivot or take advantage of something that comes up that will need a short turnaround time. Sometimes, if you don't have the contracting vehicles in place, it's hard to solicit the assistance you need at the time you need it.
Right, right. And, and yeah, we heard about the two new opportunities from the Department of Water Resources earlier this week. It's pretty encouraging, so hopefully there are more.
What do, what do you think are the grant amounts that we're applying for?
The, for the DWR grants? We're applying for two separate grants. One is for general spillway work, and one is for an actuator replacement on one of our dams. And both are going to be in the range of $1 to $2 million at this point. Currently, it's a $50 million pool. We anticipate a greater funding pool available next year, but it's somewhat dependent on how things go. And so applying for a much larger grant sometimes makes you less competitive.
Yeah, it's, it's great. I think it's, it's very cost-effective to have these services on, especially not knowing whether you've got, when these things are going to come up. So I support it. Thank you.
I was a little surprised to hear that FEMA does preemptive work. I thought it was mostly after the event, not before.
Yeah, so these are, what we're applying for is a phased grant. So should we move, should we get the grant, we would move into the design phase, and then there would need to be another benefit cost analysis done to, to obtain the second phase, the construction. These grants come out, you know, pretty, like, annually. We applied for the Pine Mountain Tunnel Project for the FEMA HMP grant. We didn't, we were not selected by CalOES to move to FEMA. But we've seen them come around for the past few years.
I'm, I'm familiar that FEMA does these hazard mitigation grants on a regular basis, and you need to have a hazard mitigation plan, which we do, and we've adopted a few, couple of years back now, and, and they do preemptively support programs that are aimed at lessening the impact of, you know, potential disasters.
I was a little surprised to hear about complete replacement of the clarifiers. That's news. Is there a reason we're not just following San Clara Valley's approach on the same design?
So we did a engineering analysis on this because we had to show that complete reconstruction was the most cost-effective. And.
And by re, complete reconstruction, you're talking about demolish in place and rebuild, or we keep the basin?
No, demolish and then rebuild. Do one and then do the other, so that you have one online.
Same size.
Correct. Yeah. Sorry, I lost your question.
I was.
Oh, yeah, so we did, we did the, the seismic evaluation, and we looked at sort of rehabilitating. But it wouldn't lessen your, the, the risk to cost benefit, so to speak. You don't lose that much risk, and it's almost the same cost. So it would be more beneficial, we felt, to just apply for a complete reconstruction.
And I presume we're not going to ask Kennedy Jenks to.
That's correct.
Take a shot at this. Okay, public comment?
There are none.
Can I get a motion to, over to the board?
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Water loss update. Yeah, dang. No work getting done today, huh?
Good morning, Board.
Good morning, Carrie.
Let's pull up the presentation here. All right. So we're here today with the team, the water loss team, to provide an update. I'm joined by, of course, I'm Carrie Pollard, Water Efficiency Manager. I'm joined by Craig Larson, our AMI Program Manager, Benjamin Bauer, a superintendent of operations, and finally, Nick Boosie, the Assistant Water Resource Specialist.
Thank you for taking the time to come and talk with us.
So just kind of bringing us back to water loss. The last time we had a discussion around water loss was in February of 2024, so earlier this year. And at that meeting, Benjamin and I provided an update on the state standards, which is an annual reporting standards, our current water loss survey findings, and also some initial new technologies that we had been evaluating. So we wanted to circle back, provide an update on our water loss gap assessment that was recently completed, well, was completed earlier this year, some actions and recommendations that have come out of that assessment, and then we're going to dive into some pilots that we're proposing for implementation, wrapping up with next steps. So I wanted to start with kind of reorienting ourselves around how much water are we talking about when we refer to water loss? It ends up being about 2,000 acre feet, foot, acre feet a year, so not insignificant, especially when we consider the water savings potential from our water efficiency program, right? So we know this is a good opportunity, and we want to take a deeper dive into understanding where we should be focusing and how we could be focusing to provide additional reduction in our losses.
And this is just the difference between the supply meters and the sales meters?
It's not. It's actually utilizing the state methodology, which is required by regulation for reporting. So it's more complex than just in/out. Because we do look at apparent losses, which is really unauthorized consumption, meter inaccuracies, so that would be the gray on that bar, and then the real losses, right? Wet water that can actually be saved, which is the blue there. So our pilots are really focusing on the blue, but some of the recommendations, we're, we're focusing on the apparent losses, and we'll talk about those as well. So this.
Carrie, sorry, just one, one more point on that previous slide. It looks like our losses are somewhat correlated with levels of consumption. So we're, it's not clear that we're actually reducing losses. They're just dependent on how much we're actually supplying.
Percentage-wise, I would say yes, that's probably true. One thing that did shift in '21 and '22 was the state, when they, when the regulations were passed, they finalized the methodology. So they became very strict and precise on how they wanted us to complete this water loss form. So the prior years, less accuracy, I would say, probably went into the data collection because it was voluntary. But in 2021 and 2022, we really kind of refined it, and I think that we will start to see a new baseline. But I didn't want to just include '21, '22 because we have been doing this reporting for, for many years. It's been something that's been on our radar.
Carrie, that's an interesting point. So can we go back, and it's a lot of work, it may not be worth it, but can we go back to the previous years and apply the same methodology so that we can compare across years, or?
We certainly could. You know, the data's there. It's just, you know, time in versus, you know, knowledge. What, what were we going to gain from that? But it could be something that we consider moving forward, especially as additional opportunities. You know, it might be something that's worth looking at.
Okay, I mean, unless it would tell us something that could guide our actions, it's just would be nice to have normalized data, but thank you for that.
And why would you think that the losses go with the demand?
One of the reasons is that we were purchasing more water from Sonoma Water during that time, and their methodologies for calculating their meter accuracy is higher. Therefore, there was more confidence in how much water was coming into the system, which also plays into these calculations. So there's, there's a number of, of layers. But I think that that's, that's one that's, was noted.
Okay, thank you.
So we did an initial water loss study, which was a gap assessment. Again, so it was, it was finalized in January of 2024. The goals of this assessment was to really kind of look at what are our current practices and what can we build upon, right? Not only from our annual reporting to the state, looking for inconsistencies and opportunities for improvement, but also evaluating our current water loss control practices, which is acoustic leak detection, crews actually going out and listening for leaks, and see if there's new technologies that we should be considering. We developed a prioritized list, and we worked with eSource on this project. So we had a consultant to kind of take a look at this work that we've been doing and give some recommendations. And there were five primary recommendations, which I'll, I'll run through, and I'll also include some actions that staff has taken to date to address these recommendations. So the first was looking at accuracy of our production meters, right? Exactly that comment. How much water is coming into the system? And then the other side of that is how much is coming out, which we have a recommendation on that. I'll touch on in a moment. So staff has begun evaluating, what does a volumetric test, what could that look like within our system? And that's a really complex idea, right? You have these large 16-inch, 24-inch meters, and we need to think about, you know, what could a test look like? How would it impact service during that time, right? There's just a lot of complexities to that. We're really fortunate that two of our primary meters were recently replaced in the last year. So we have a high level of confidence of those two meters. We have one more scheduled for replacement this year. And so that's kind of buying us a little bit of time to really figure out, what does this test look like? How can operations fit it into their system, maybe when other work's being done? So that's, it's on their radar, something we're, we're definitely moving forward on. Again, having those new meters in place is, is great. The second recommendation was to update and review our data export. So this is our SAP data. And you can see back, right, looking at those inconsistencies or those last four years versus compared to the most recent last two years, the prior exports from SAP weren't including all consumption. They were only including all billed consumption, right? And so there, there's a difference there. And so revising these and looking at how, what those exports are to make sure that we're capturing all metered water use when we're doing these calculations is very important. So that's been updated, and check that box and say it's done, which helps with our, our accuracy of the, of the reporting.
Carrie, just to that comment, for clarification, help me understand, what is the non-billed use? What, what would contribute to that?
We don't bill ourselves. If there's leak adjustments, right? So how are those captured kind of within our system? So we know water flowed through the meter, but it wasn't always coming out in our final report, based on how we were running the report. It was, it was an error on our end of not knowing exactly what the, how the report was being generated on the backend of SAP.
And FIRE too, huh?
And FIRE 2, exactly.
Yeah, FIRE doesn't, doesn't get logged.
Yeah. The third recommendation was around customer metering and testing, meter, meter testing and maintenance. So we have small meters, right, our 5/8, 3/4 inch meters. We test them as, as they come out of, of it to the field, and, you know, there would be an opportunity for us to expand that meter testing to ensure there's a better cross-section of meters that are, that are included in this, this testing program. But recognizing that AMI is, you know, right, coming up behind us really soon here, it doesn't make sense for staff to spend the time pulling meters and testing them because our AMI implementation will kind of reset our meter stock. And so we feel like that's being addressed as we move forward. Looking at large meters, we do use our AWWA methodology, which is the standard for the state, but we recognize that there is an opportunity to test these large meters at their most common flows to ensure that we're billing based on, and we're capturing the consumption that are actually going through those meters. So that would be an opportunity and something else that the meter shop's looking at for an SOP on, you know, how do we do this and make sure that it gets captured?
I'd be interested in hearing what you think the opportunity is because it's pretty complicated. And the other part is, it's an interesting idea. I've never heard anybody do it about the volumetric proof of the meter because of the volume you need to put them into. You know, in a small air, in that, say, the diameter of a tank. You know, you, you can get that level change accuracy, but then you've got demand ongoing while you're doing this, and you don't know the demand. I guess with AMI, you could actually do it. That's an interesting idea. You could actually get the demand that is occurring, at least the known demand, and then back that out of this. It, it's, it's a challenge, to say the least.
It is. It is. All of those, and then some are, 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 you know, reasons why it hasn't just immediately happened, right? It's going to take some planning and, and thoughtful planning at that.
Well, I think the other thing is, does it really matter? You know, I, I think that's been the approach that's been used in the water industry is, you know, it's, it's a number. The matter, the number that matters is the bill number, the one that comes out of the small meters, not the the ones that's in the larger meters, except for this issue of loss.
Right, it's hard to calculate loss if we don't have an accurate number of, of, you, you know, water going in.
But I don't think you ever will. That's my point. You know, I, I think that's a nice goal, but I don't see a practical way of achieving that. Perhaps, but.
Perhaps.
Do we know where our losses are? I mean, do they, I mean, I would imagine that they're in the, the smaller and smaller networks of our pipes.
So fortunately, we have our technical team here who will speak to that in a moment. Yeah. So the fourth recommendation was to conduct a loss component analysis. We are utilizing grant funding that we've received from Sonoma Water, part of their regional water efficiency grant to, to do this work. It's currently underway, and the goal here is to prioritize and standardize measurement of loss. So more on this once we get that report finalized. It's, it's scheduled to be done by the end of the year, so we'll come back with that information. And then the final.
Carrie, just if I could, to Director Schmidt, your question, just that's what this loss component analysis will help with, is identifying what the components in the system are and, and what their contribution is to leaks. So, you know, if we find that a particular type of pipe or valve set or something of this nature is a common component, and it has a history of leak, you know, we can identify those types of areas of the system. So I think that will help.
Fortunately, the larger leaks identify themselves. So they come up through the asphalt. So when a bigger pipe breaks and it's significant, like the cracks in the cast iron pipes, those tend to surface pretty rapidly. So, you know, they create other problems that are as big or bigger than they are.
And the final recommendation was to consider piloting new leakage recovery techniques. So E-Source provided us a list of strategies and technologies for the district to consider. There are seven items listed here and so some of them are widget based, so like the acoustic logger. So we'll hear more about that in a moment. But also some of them are operational based, so looking at pressure management and where there are opportunities to reduce pressure to minimize loss or reduce loss. So we took these seven recommendations, one of which we already implement, the manual acoustic survey. And we talked to manufacturers to hear, you know, their pitch and, you know, how they're going to solve our problem. Talked to consultants and we also talked to other utilities. And one we spoke about in February was the satellite leak detection. And so I wanted to kind of circle back with that one because we were really excited about it. And we talked to some other utilities and we found that maybe it's not as great as we had thought it was going to be. And so I wanted to kind of just bring that full circle. So what we have here is the image on the right is the large, it might look like basketball, the larger circles there are the satellite points of interest. So the satellite imagery said, you know, this is where we think there are leaks. They also did a blind test and they had field crews go out and do the survey, the same area. And those are the little pin dots. So the orange or yellowy-orange circles, large satellite circles are areas where no leaks were detected. And the bluish larger circles are areas where there was an overlap. And so what they found is there's a 70% of false positives using the satellite leak detection. So while it's worked for some, it hasn't worked for many others. And so we just don't feel like the technology is quite there yet. We're tabling that, but we're moving on and we're looking at other technologies. And so fortunately today we have, we'll have Craig start off speaking on the acoustic leak detection pilot. So that'll turn over to Craig.
Please remind us, what does a satellite sense for?
Right. I'd have to go back and look at the notes, but it's, it can, it looks for water surfacing or, you know, wet earth, if you would.
I see, that's its primary.
Yes. Although they told us they could see if it was groundwater, if it was seawater, you know, treated water.
In paved areas.
In paved areas, yes, yes. So as you can see, we were excited, but set it aside for other, other opportunities.
All right, thanks, Carrie. Good morning. So I'll be talking about an upcoming leak detection pilot. Our main objectives are to utilize technology to improve our response rate to system leaks and to determine if this technology is more effective than our current methods. We also want to find out if permanent installation of noise loggers meet the district's monitoring needs. So ideally, this type of technology could help us find out about leaks sooner and in some cases when they're smaller and narrow the search area in the process. So the two technologies we're looking at are the Ecologix Echo Shore DX, which is a Mueller product. And the other one is the CamStrup AMI meter with built-in acoustic leak detection. So I'll talk about the Mueller solution first. As you can see, it's a hydrant cap that's all self-contained. Within that cap is the battery, the cellular, it, you know, it's able to connect to the existing cellular infrastructure in our service area. And the acoustic sensor is all self-contained in that cap. And it's designed to attach to the hydrants that are already in our service area. And you can see they can color match the hydrants to make it blend a little more. And then that diagram in the upper right shows how the technology is supposed to work. In this case, there's two hydrants, let's say they're 400 feet apart and each one has a sensor. If a leak develops on the main, both sensors are going to hear the same leak, but because of the sound level or decibel level, it can determine that the leak is closer to sensor number two and even given approximation of where the leak's located along that 400-foot run. So that's continuing with the Mueller, some highlights.
How many fire hydrants do we have?
How many hydrants total?
Thousands, huh?
Thousands.
A lot of these devices.
You know, it would be interesting to follow up on this one as we're starting to see a lot of vandalism on fire hydrants throughout the state in terms of actually removing them. Los Angeles is seeing theft of hydrants. So this kind of stuff would make me a little nervous to put it out there if people start looking to do that kind of stuff.
Right. Yeah, so they, Mueller claims that they're hidden in plain sight, but they're not cheap. And even though you can secure them with a chain, that isn't full security there.
They not have much value though. The hydrants, I'm sure they're going for the metal, not for the-
Yeah, it's the perception of value is what's driving a lot of this stuff.
Right. And Mueller does say that they can also GPS these, so you would see where they went. But I don't know if we'd ever actually pursue that or get them back. So some of the highlights for Mueller, 10-year battery life and the battery is replaceable, communicates with the cellular network. It's customizable to hydrant manufacturer, so, you know, thread, diameter, color. Mueller will do the remote monitoring and then send notifications to district staff for this pilot period. It works with metallic or concrete mains up to 16-inch. And in addition to identifying potential leaks, it also gives a prediction of the size of the leak. So it'll classify it as a small, medium or large leak.
Not plastic, huh?
Right, yeah, it doesn't do well on plastic because it's, it's, there's no contact with the water. It's attached to the hydrant, but that's dry. So it's picking up that sound traveling along the pipe material to get to the hydrant. And the example there, that map is from San Jose, California. They've been using this technology for a while. And there's five areas there circled in yellow and those are little red triangle icons showing that a leak has been identified near that hydrant. And then all the green triangle icons are also hydrants, but everything's quiet. So that map view can kind of let you zoom in on what hydrants have a potential leak nearby.
How can I, going back to that, how, how small of a leak can it detect?
So the, that five gallons per minute is what they consider the small leak. But that's still, you know, many thousands of gallons a day.
Yeah, that doesn't seem small to me, but, but can it go, I mean, can it go further down to lower levels of leaks? And is, and do we, and what do we think are, are, you know, where are we, where are we looking to find leaks? I mean, something that's over 30 gallons per minute strikes me, it's going to be like what Larry's talking about where it's going. We're seeing it because it's surfacing. I would, are we trying to, are we primarily trying to find the leaks in a particular category of size?
Yeah, well, there's a couple geographic areas that we're piloting with certain criteria. So we'll dig a little deeper into that. But district-wide, there, yeah, as the leak gets larger, we're likely to see it or somebody's going to call about it regardless of the technology. But the, yeah, that is a concern of that, the five gallon per minute being kind of the low end.
Yeah, sorry, Director Schmidt, go ahead.
I was going to just ask the next question, it's like, do you have to install them on every single hydrant? Or can you, can you space your network out?
So they claim up to 900 feet, which in most cases, you might be able to skip the hydrant in between. But yeah, but definitely most.
I was just going to share, I think one of the examples that this outfit uses is, you know, the shining example was at San Jose, if you're familiar with Lawrence Expressway, it's kind of a six or seven lane, you know, very busy road. And this technology was able to identify a leak that didn't surface in that and allowed them to kind of plan that repair, you know, for a late night type of repair rather than oops, a pipe break right in the middle of rush hour. So that's kind of where this technology is finding its sweet spot. So you might not put it everywhere, you might selectively choose your really busy areas.
And there's several, there's a lot of rural areas in our, you know, service area that have hydrants and have less eyes around. So this could, you know, potentially catch a leak sooner. So the other one is the CamStrup solution. This is an AMI meter with built-in acoustic leak detection. And there's an image there of the dashboards. The idea would be there would be a layer of our infrastructure showing the mains and then every CamStrup meter would have an icon on the map. And it's similar to Mueller, it's going to use color to show you where, you know, suspected leaks are. And then you can also have a list view or, you know, spreadsheet type view of, to filter and prioritize leaks. So some highlights of CamStrup, 20-year battery life. The acoustic leak detection is built into every 5/8, 3/4 and 1-inch meter. They're all ultrasonic meters, there's kind of a cutaway view of a meter there. So within the meter, it's measuring flow as every meter should, but it's also listening for leaks outside of the meter. And it's listening to the water column. So CamStrup actually claims that the pipe diameter or pipe material is not an issue because it's listening to the vibration through the water column because that sensor is wet. And the incorporates machine learning to improve accuracy. So the idea is the longer the system's in place, the more it can kind of adapt to this, you know, our unique infrastructure. And then the district staff would monitor the dashboard with tech support from CamStrup. And they claim a 90% leak confirmation rate. So if it, if the software identifies a leak and district staff is sent out there to investigate, they're claiming 90% chance there's water loss on the district's side. I've spoken with a couple districts across the country and they both agree with that 90% number, which is pretty impressive. And with that, I'll turn it over to Benjamin Bauer.
Craig, it also sense on the customer side.
That's what I asked, does it do the customer side as well for that one?
Yeah, but because it's, because the meter can also see that there's consumption, it's able to kind of balance those out and say, let's say the customer has a 24-hour leak. It's able to say, we hear it and we, and we can actually measure it. Where on the district's side, it's only going to hear it.
Craig, are they, this, so this CamStrup meter is one that we're also considering for our AMI implementation.
Correct.
So it has that dual functionality, so that I'm guessing that puts it high up on the list if in fact the pilots are prom, are-
Yeah, that's why I really like the, the timing of this pilot because it's in advance of having to select an AMI vendor. So we're able to test this feature, which they're the only ones with the, with the leak detection built into the meter. Some others have external sensors that can attach to the curb cock, things like that. But, so yeah, it's a good timing for the pilot.
You had mentioned in your previous presentation on the AMI rollout, another meter that you were testing with, in collaboration with that group, Imagine H2O.
Yeah, they're-
What was the, what was the unique feature on that one?
That's the Subeca that uses Amazon sidewalk. So it doesn't need us to install collectors, it doesn't need the cellular network. It communicates with Amazon devices like the Alexa and Ring doorbell. So it kind of piggybacks off of that network. And that Imagine H2O is grant funding 100 units for us to try out.
Thanks.
How much more is this AMI meter versus others? I mean, I imagine that this comes at a bit of a premium.
Right, yeah, they kind of sell it as that it's included with every meter, but the meter itself does cost more. But it's, looking at the different AMI solutions, it's kind of apples and oranges because this one has radio and cellular. Badger, for example, just does cellular, Census just does radio. But in comparing prices, this one is more expensive.
I mean, you can quickly see where I'm going with this, which is that, you know, there's just the cost of the AMI meters and those are just, you know, replacing meters. But if we also add in what is our current cost of leak detection and this is, and we factor that into, you know, the network, now the, we have to see it in a different light in order to see economically apples to apples. And so I'm just, was wondering if it was, it's the most important thing is to make sure it works. So support us looking into this and figuring that out first before figuring out the economics. But if it's, unless it's like dramatically more expensive such that it just would be prohibitive to really put this out on, again, on every home, but again, maybe it doesn't have to be every home. Maybe it's every third home or whatever the range of detection. So it might actually make sense to think of it in the context of not every meter, but some. If it, if it allows us again to cover this, you know, the need to understand our leaks and conserve water.
Right, and have avoided costs potentially.
Are you looking at cost of the additional upgrade for the AMI meter with leak detection? And then anticipated savings from leak detection water-wise?
Yeah, or, and whatever our cost is to like our current means of detecting it and what do we save in terms of, you know, avoided breaks and other things? I mean, this is, if we can avoid a big expensive break on a really, you know, some of our breaks that happen on huge roads become really expensive. We avoid those things, that, that's an avoided cost that should go into the factoring of, you know, of a system like this.
Agreed.
So we have two pilot areas and Ben's going to speak to those.
Before we get there, do we have any issues using plastic meters? Because we don't have very many.
Right. Historically, the meter operation hasn't been a big fan of plastic meters with cross-threading and crafting and failing. CamStrups, CamStrup, they have a stainless steel or a, this polyphenylene sulfide, which they claim to be pretty strong and other water districts have been using it and they agree it's pretty strong. So we're going to be testing out some of those, kind of run them through the wringer and see if, if they would be-
Okay.
Yeah, appropriate.
Thanks.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Two areas were selected for the leak logger pilot study. One in Division One is the Santa Manisha neighborhood in San Rafael. The second in Division Two, the Spinnaker Point neighborhood in San Rafael. These sites were selected based on pipe type and leak history. The CamStrup meter loggers and the Mueller hydrant loggers will be deployed in the same neighborhoods. This is the San Manisha neighborhood. The piping was installed in 1990 using welded steel water main and copper services. The metallic pipeline should carry sound well. Between 1989 and 1994, insulators were installed at each tap. These insulators are failing and the high volume of leaks in the area is expected to produce good data. The hydrant logger-
Those are sound insulators or?
No, cathodic.
Cathodic.
Yeah. The hydrant logger location is fixed, obviously, at each hydrant. There will be just over double the amount of meters installed, one meter near each hydrant and one meter at a point in between hydrants. And this orientation is expected to produce good results on how well each set of logger retrieves information from the same leak point. This is the Spinnaker Point neighborhood. There will be just over, I'm sorry, this, this is a neighborhood where there's a number of plastic services. The 1980s era, plastic has become brittle and is being removed from the system. In order for the study to be relevant to Marin, this location was selected.
So these are butylene or?
These are butylene, yes, correct.
We didn't replace when they replaced them blanket, huh?
We're, every time we see it, we're removing it.
I got it.
Yeah. The pipeline consists of welded steel main and polybutylene services. This, this is slightly smaller area, but the same orientation of meter loggers and hydrant loggers. With that, Nick Bussi, the Assistant Water Resources Specialist.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Ben. Good morning. So there's a few different ways of finding water loss and we heard about acoustic detection from Ben and Craig. And I'm here to explain district metered areas, which is kind of an alternative technology. And really a DMA is just a, an area where you can measure all the different flow variables, the water in and the water out and pressures. And really what the benefit of that is, is if you know the water in and the water out, the difference between the two is your water loss. And we also know that water systems operate under pressure. And as they get old, there's like weeps and seeps that occur at joints and over time that increases. So we know if we can reduce that pressure, we can reduce those weeps and seeps too. All right, so this concept is called pressure management. And an example of how that would work is you'd install your measuring technology, excuse me. It'd be flow meters, pressure sensors throughout this pressure zone. And then you would measure a baseline condition. So you'd establish your initial water loss and then you would pause and reduce the pressure. And then you'd basically repeat the experiment and be able to calculate the water loss savings. So now we need to find an area to test this idea out on. And there's really a few specific features that we'd be looking for. Number one is that it'd be hydraulically isolated. If a pressure zone is too big and connected to too many other pressure zones, there's too many paths for water to come in and out of and it just makes calculating the water loss a little bit difficult. So you'd want something that just has one or two pathways in or out. You'd also want there to be limited elevation change. A lot of our pressure zones are on steep hillsides and the upper parts of those zones are already at pretty low pressures and there's just not a lot of opportunity- And there's just not a lot of opportunity to reduce the pressure across the zone. And then lastly, you'd want it to have some aging infrastructure because new pipelines just have fewer leaks. So you'd want to find an area with older pipes that have more of those weeps and seeps that we spoke about before. So we looked at our system and we found the Los Robles Toyon Pressure Zone. It's in Southern San Rafael. And it has a lot of those ideal DMA features I was talking about. There's only two pathways and two regulators and there's no exits besides the customers. And there's also not a lot of elevation change. And it has a history of leaks. So the way the potential pilot would look is we'd install two flow meters, one on each of the regulators, and then a few pressure sensors on the nearby fire hydrants. And then we'd run the experiment. We would measure the baseline water loss, pause and then reduce the pressure and then re-measure the flows and be able to calculate the, the water loss savings.
Seems like you should be thinking about, and perhaps you are, running this against the computer model, the node and pressure model. Because it could then, for if no other reason, it's a good calibration of that model. And it might give you insight to where to look. You know, if, if the pressures aren't jiving with what the model says, then there's a leak in between or something, huh?
It's a great suggestion. I was actually just watching a, a pilot about digital twins yesterday. And they were talking about DMA technology where you can actually create a digital twin in a hydraulic model that keeps real-life data from an experiment like this. And you'd be able to compare the two and get better results.
Yep, yep. I was going to suggest, what's old in your terminology?
It really depends. It's a, it's a good question. It's really more about the history of leaks. So I was looking for areas that have more repairs. And that's a little bit better corollator.
Because where I live is if it's all of your modeling things except the age. Paradise K is flat. It's high pressure, 135 PSI. And it is, it may be too small. I don't know. How, how many sites are in the Toyon one?
There's about 120.
In a similar size. We're probably 300 or something like that, but it's that kind of numbers. Anyway, it might fit other than it's 65 or ish. So I don't know, you know, I don't even know if it's AC or it's steel, but.
We can definitely look into that one, too.
You know, it's a thought because it is flat, perfectly flat.
All right. So those are the pilots that have been developed. So we have various technologies and then also some operational changes that we're looking at. So when we're talking about next steps, we're going to continue our state reporting as required, right? And we want to track those performance metrics as we showed on that initial slide to meet or exceed those regulatory requirements. Continue implementing the improvements that were, that were suggested as part of the gap assessment as feasible. We're going to implement the Mueller and CamStrup pilots. We're shooting for early 2025. The contracts have been sent to legal, so that's kind of in the works. We feel like these pilot areas that have been selected make a lot of sense to help us understand what the value is for a district-wide potential implementation, which would be, you know, part of the ongoing assessment. I will continue developing the pressure management pilot and implement if it's feasible, especially considering the modeling opportunity. And then, of course, provide periodic reports back to the board on how we're doing on water loss control and findings from these pilots moving forward. So with that, if there are any additional questions, this is an informational-only item and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Questions?
No, just thank you for the work on this and really looking forward to seeing what the data is going to present.
Yeah. Carrie, you mentioned the State Water Resources Control Board Performance Standards, which will be, I guess, coming in in 2028. We're obviously preparing for those in addition to improving the efficiency of our system. Do you, are we, at this point, do we have any concerns that we may not meet their regulatory requirements? And are those requirements just based on loss measurements? Or do they also require these types of loss prevention programs?
So water loss control is part of the ongoing Making Conservation in California Way of Life regulation. So it's one of the components. So it's not taken in of itself. It's taken as part of the overall package. Regardless of how we look at it as water loss just by itself or the entire package, there's no concern about us meeting the regulatory requirement. It's really looking at where are there opportunities to get additional savings within our system and, and what makes sense as we look at opportunities to, you know, continue, you know, saving water.
So based on all the efforts we've done to date, we are well within the state regulatory requirements. And this is additional effort to ensure that we continue to be as good as possible in terms of conserving our water supply and having the best efficiencies in water use. That's, I think that's important to note.
Right. It's always a look back, right, for the regulation. So, you know, we've been compliant based on the last few years with no issues. So I anticipate that moving forward.
Super supportive. Thanks, guys, for moving this forward. I didn't see what your thought of the potential water savings would be with this leak detection, right? So I, I know that you're noticing leaks, but how do you figure out how effective this will?
I think that's the value of the pilots, right, is that it helps us appreciate and understand what are the savings potential? And do these technologies work? I mean, you know, they come and they make lots of claims about, you know, effectiveness and.
Salesmen.
Right, but we want to make sure. And that's why we're trying to keep it small and condensed and also strategic around implementation of these pilots so that we can monitor the potential savings.
Terrific. And did you give us a cost for the pilots that you expect?
We didn't. We anticipate the Mueller project, because it's a pilot, it'll be $20,000 for that pilot. The CamStrup was in the same price range and we haven't priced out the pressure management options yet. But well within water efficiency budget, we don't anticipate needing additional funds for a pretty small pilot.
Super supportive. Thank you.
I think this is really great, Carrie, but I, and I think obviously we're focusing on what kind of conservation we can get out of it, water savings. But I continue to be shocked always at how much the district spends on repairs when we have breaks. And so I think that is, that just, that's, I think that's an important part of this narrative and, and this work. And seeing, you know, like almost as you showed all the, you know, you know, our apparent losses. Like if there's really a connection between, you know, the number of breaks that we can avoid and the unplanned repairs and the damages that sometimes cost, you know, occur to our customers' properties and things like that. Like I, I think it would be really helpful to see it in that context as well. I know it won't stop all the breaks. Like some things probably don't leak and then they just burst, you know? So you don't, it would never have stopped that. But if we have a sense of how much that is also going to be an important component, I think that would help see the value of this work in that light as well. So super cool.
What is our current estimated leak amount ballpark?
Under 10%.
Yeah, I know that.
So it's, last year it was about 2,000, it was about 2,000 acre feet as shown in that, in the initial graph.
Am I remembering about 17 gallons per?
Connection per.
Connection per day.
And what's the state shooting for?
So the state has, every water utility has a different goal. It's unique to the organization.
You have any idea why?
There's been numerous studies on it and that's.
Just curious. It's important to understand that third world can be 50%. So, you know, we're, we're dealing in the, it's kind of like conservation. We're kind of in the fringe side of it, not in the main heart. The improvements will be important, but small. How much do the Mueller devices cost roughly?
I believe 1,300 per logger.
And do they monitor pressure too?
They do not.
Oh, they're not? That's right. They're just metal, huh?
It's a dry hydrant, right?
Yeah, interesting. And ComStrup?
The meter, we're only piloting 5/8 meters and they're, it's kind of bundled into this pilot cost, but a meter by itself, the cellular ones are $280.
Oh, so they're in the ballpark of what range it costs. It may be a little higher, but they're not, not substantially higher. Okay, cool. Any public comment?
Yes, there are two so far. Phil Soder and then Jack Kenny.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, and thank you. I'm blown away by the information that staff is collecting and how it's being used. In my first 47 years at my house, I had zero leaks. The first one happened during one of last year's storms when a redwood branch fell and sliced through an outdoor PVC pipe behind the house. My neighbor found it with a stethoscope and fixed it within a day. The second leak occurred last month when I heard a rushing sound and found my meter was spinning. I turned off the water shut-off coming into the house and the meter kept going. There was water pooling in the meter box and I wondered if there was a leak in the meter itself or in the pipe coming into the meter. I tried to turn off the inlet valve coming into the meter, but it was frozen solid. There was nothing I could do to stop the flow of water, so I called the leak number on the district's website. That was on a Saturday and Nick said he would be there Monday. His new meter reader came with him and they replaced the meter, which still kept turning. So we concluded that the leak was between the meter and the shut-off valve in my house. And I got a plumber to replace that pipe. Nick said that the issue was on my side of the meter and there was no leak on the district side. After the meter and pipe to my house were both replaced, freshwater continued to pool in the meter box. My meter is not turning, so it looks like there's still a leak on the district side, although Nick said there is not. During this process, I used 10 CCF of water and became one of those super users that Director Russell plays poker with. I figured the extra 10 CCF will cost me $100 and double my usual water bill. One lesson I got from this investment is how much water a super user actually consumes. To get a $1,000 monthly, bi-monthly bill, a customer would have to use 60 CCF or 750 gallons a day. That's what my burst pipe used and it's a lot of water. If every residential customer used that much water, we'd be producing 40 million gallons a day and depleting our reservoirs by 44,000 acre feet a year. As we continue to dive into customer data, it would be interesting to see how many super users we think we can support. It's sure not everybody and perhaps we're already past our limit. I, I think we are. It will be good to focus on lawns and leaks as we work to extend our water supply. In addition to making us more secure, it would send a good message to any other water districts who think we're being wasteful. Thanks again.
And Phil, just a comment. Before the meeting started, Paul mentioned that the reclaimed water, the recycled water is up to 1.6 MCD.
Nice.
Yeah.
Cool.
So that's almost a million gallons more or 500,000 gallons more than normal.
That's really great. Thank you for that.
I was just wondering if there's ever been a cost analysis done to calculate how much the leakage is indirectly end up costing our constituents?
There are no further speakers.
Okay, cool. Okay, with that, we've got upcoming meeting in a month, November 15th. And we'll adjourn. And thank you guys very much.
Thank you.